Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 22, 2024, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the district website. The first item on our agenda is the discussion and approval of the minutes from the October 8, 2024, meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. Full house tonight, I love it. So we're going to start out with our personnel update. I am happy to report a couple of new hires. We have Caitlin Manville, an ABA at Park Ave Elementary, and Phil Legere-Aparra at Webster Middle School. So we'd like to welcome them to the Webster Public School family. We have no resignations and no transfers at this time and continue to have the same open positions that we've been carrying on the books for a while. And then I'm going to go back up. Tonight, we are here to celebrate a retirement. As you know, Ms. Kathleen Barris is retiring at the end of the month, and I'm going to try and keep myself in check here. Tonight is her last official meeting, and I have had the absolute pleasure of working with Kathy for the past 12 years here in Webster. And Kathy is somebody who's just been a constant around here, somebody that I could depend on, somebody that I could count on, somebody that I looked up to, somebody that I went to for advice. And I am, I just can't tell you what a professional, kind-hearted, loving person she is, and I am going to miss her terribly. I wish her nothing but the best in her retirement. She always shows up here with just a positive, happy attitude, no matter what is going on in the world. We always say that, you know, when you show up, you're a professional, you try and keep your personal life personal and your professional life professional. And Kathy has done that in an amazing way that just brings strength to who she is as a person. So you are going to be deeply missed here in Webster by many of us. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything because I'm going to start to get emotional in a minute. So does anybody else want to add their two cents?
I cannot not say something, but I will try to not be emotional as well. I started here seven years ago, and I remember, one of my first memories of Kathy is when I interviewed, and I didn't have the experience to do the job. And she said to me, in lieu of experience, it's the skills. And from there, I just learned and grew from her, and so did so many people. Because like the superintendent stated, she is a role model for the director position, and she really led by example. And I am going to definitely miss her terribly, but I think that she made a lot of wonderful decisions on behalf of the students of Webster Public Schools and special education especially, and they thrived as a result of her leadership.
How will I miss thee? Let me count the ways. I have had the pleasure of knowing Kathy for quite a while, having been here for quite a while. But when I came up to central office as director, Kathy was my mentor. And I can definitely say that we have shared a lot of learning together, a lot of camaraderie, a lot of fun together. And I just truly appreciate all the wisdom that you've imparted and, most of all, your friendship. Anytime you need to laugh, you know where to call.
She's truly been somebody, like I said, that I admire and I look up to and that I've tried to mimic in how I lead. You know, no matter what's going on around you or what's imploding around you or the situation is, every time you'd walk in, she's had a calm presence and just dealt with the facts and just said, okay, let's take a look at it, let's back up and just walk through the process. And that's how I try to do and lead every day, is just taking one thing at a time, walk through the process, let's look at it calmly from all angles, and then we deal with it. So I just, you know, we're going to miss you like crazy, we appreciate you, we wish you nothing but happiness. And then we do have our customary Webster Public School retirement present that we have now. As you know, your name will be hanging on the plaque forever here in Webster, which we have started doing, and it'll be in every school with the year that you retire. And we also have our special education classes. Okay. Okay. Two more days until... There we go. Okay, back to reality. Okay. So that concludes our personnel report, an update. Next, I am going to move on, unless there's any questions, to our instructional leadership update. No? Okay. As you know, the MCAS scores were released at the end of September. We have kind of debriefed them as a team and have gone through and looked at the report. And tonight, we have a high-level overview of what they look like for us here in Webster. Dr. Mackay, you want to kick us off?
the Mass Accountability System. The Massachusetts Accountability System contains, consists of two components. The first one being the accountability percentile that we are accustomed to seeing, which measures the performance of all students in a school compared to other schools in the state that serve similar grades and is reported as a percentile from 1 to 99. And the second component of this is the targets that Desi sets for our students to be successful for the following year, which measures the district or school's progress toward those improvement targets and is reported as a percentage as well. We, in the accountability system, there are measures of performance of groups and schools and districts on specific indicators, and these are the indicators that contribute to our accountability status, achievement of students, student growth. And one thing that we'll get into a little bit more later is you can have progress, students can make progress but not growth. There are two different accountability, two different markers, two different statistics. High school completion is something that's taken into account for accountability. English learner proficiency is also taken into account, and additional indicators such as like other factors that go into all of those decisions, like passing some classes, inclusive of like passing ninth-grade classes is a marker. So the accountability data for districts and schools are assembled from MCAS data from '22, '23, and '24, so it's not just last year's data. Access data from '22, '23, '24. Chronic absenteeism is another one of those markers, and that's also data from '22, '23, '24. What advanced coursework is completed at the high school level, '22, '23, '24. Four-year cohort graduation rates from '21, '22, and '23. Annual dropout rates from '21, '22, and '23. Extended engagement rates, rate data from '20, '21, and '22.
So the accountability report includes all accountability measures, including detailed data for each accountability indicator, indicator targets, detailed assessments, participation rates, school and student groups, federal designations, and other information related to low student groups and performance, graduation rates, or low assessment participation. So as an overview of the state, we went through and had a webinar with the state and looked at the state data overall. Across Massachusetts, they are showing ELA results show lower achievement in all grades from 2023. Math results show an improvement achievement in third grade amongst relatively flat results in most grades, so it stayed pretty level. Science results showed improved achievement in grades five and 10 and lower achievement in grade eight. So this is what the state is seeing as a whole. This slide shows us how the state measured in ELA. Again, this is state data across the state. I'm going to have you look at the last two columns, we're going to focus on those. So in 2023, you'll see the state declined by 2% in grade three. And then I'm not going to read every column, you can look down to see. Anything they did in red is a decline, if it's a positive, it's in green. Anything that's black was in the, within the 1% margin. So from negative one to one, they just figured that was pretty flat. And then the column to the right to 2019 is how many points they are still off the level from the year 2019, right before COVID. So the state declined 2% in grade three, for an example, and they're still 14% off the 2019 benchmark, when we hit in 2019.
I would say that this data is consistent with the findings that we've had, that we've talked about, especially as we entered COVID, because we were on, we were also, the state was, but we were also on a better trajectory before COVID, and then we, COVID hit, and across the state, we're catching up.
So then what I did is I took the state versus Webster, 2024 ELA results by grade. So again, you have the state column, 2023, and then Webster, 2024, how we compare to the 2023 data. So in grade three, for example, we showed growth, 3% from 2023. So we improved in that category in 2023. And we grade out the 2019 column right now, we didn't have certain data, so we're going to go back to that in a little bit and compare. But as you can see, looking down where we've, you know, had some gains and we've also had some declines, looking at the dinner, data for ELA. And then I did the same for math. So we look at math, this is the state results in math. So you can see how they showed a little growth, and then they remained pretty flat across the board. And then how they compare to the level we were at in 2019. I did the same exercise, I put in Webster's data, in the middle column, how we compared to 2023. So you see where we've had some gains, and we've also had some loss. And then I completed that exercise for science, technology, and engineering. So across the state, grades five in 2023 grew 3%, but is still down 4% compared to 2019 in grades five. And then if we look at the state versus Webster with the same results, you'll see our data is pretty good here, we've shown some growth in all of those areas. You've heard us talk a lot about chronically absent and how that impacts our scores. If you're not here to learn, you see a bigger decline in the results of testing. So at the state average, they took a look at who was meeting and exceeding, not chronically absent, and who was chronically absent, and you can see the numbers are pretty evident, staggering for the learning loss for students who are not here. And so this data was hard to pull from the state using the same benchmark. So what we did is we used our Open Architect to look at this and how absenteeism impacts growth. So you can see, this is our data for students and how it impacts their student growth percentage. So exceeding in needs with an average of 10 days, but the more days they miss, the more students are not meeting. This is math, and this is ELA. So you can see the continuum, which makes sense. This is actually a screenshot from Open Architect. So we've talked a lot about the data that we're looking at, how we can access data. And to me, this is one of the best things that we have purchased in Webster in a long time, because it is so easy to put your finger on data in a moment's notice. I have, I've been looking at this constantly for the past couple of weeks. There's many other dashboards that we can look at to compare data, compare iReady data, Dibbles data, we can get into the student at the granular level, we can look at what questions were answered, what questions were missed. We can filter by pretty much anything you want to know. But I think the biggest thing to notice is here, the chart's over here to your left, is what really stands out. So this is district-level data that we're looking at across the district, and you can see this top line, this dotted line, is the state trajectory since 2009. And then the bottom line is where Webster has gone. So you can see that they're very similar in ELA. And then you can see the math line, the state line here, and where we stand. Very similar. What we don't want to see is those lines going in opposite directions. We're hoping to close this gap and move up. Anything that starts moving away, when you see growth here and decline here, that's not what we want to see. We want to see narrowing. So as we're looking at Open Architect, and when we're looking at these, we can click on any of these benchmarks here, and it would pull up data behind the scenes that we could look at. I'm not going to do it here, because you start getting into student's name and student's information, but it's that easy to look at different types of data with Open Architect. And you can see up here how you can filter. You could filter by school, students, you could pull up subgroups, you could do lookup, you could get down to the items, the individual questions of, and then you can compare yourself to other districts in here. So there's a lot you can do. And this is just one of the dashboards. We have about, I think there's eight dashboards in there maybe, that we can use for different So some of the positives for us, at Bartlett High School, our grade 10 had gains in ELA up 6% from our previous year. If I were to pull up a slope from an Open Architect that shows the gain, you would see a nice trajectory going up in there. At Bartlett High School, our Ls made a big leap from 2023, exceeding their non-L peers in ELA, so we saw growth. As you noticed, we, you know, we've come to you and talked a lot about our instructional priority, what it means, we're focusing on Ls and student with disabilities are our main focus for us, as we look at our instructional priority. And then if you, another positive is science for 10th graders show an increase in students with disability, also showing a remarkable improvement in partially meeting category increasing over 28% in the past two years. So our students with disabilities saw some growth at the high school. At Webster Middle School, our grade six math results improved 5% from the previous year. We are also at Webster Middle School, our science, technology, and engineering results are also increasing for meeting and exceeding. And at Park Avenue, we had some increases in grade three math in ELA in, at meeting and exceeding from the previous year. And our Ls made gains in geometry in grade three from 24% to 47%. So there are highlights within the data when you start digging, digging through. So now we're going to go into our actions. So we've talked a lot about data. This is, our DIL team, as you know, is a big focus for us, looking at all kinds of data. This is one set of data that we look at. We're looking at many other pieces of data throughout to help us work through our school year and have action steps to improve. Last year, we spent a lot of time putting in structures in place on how we're looking and how we're focusing on data. And this year, we're really focusing on, we have the structures now, what are the action steps to it? So the principals are here to talk about what's going on in their buildings, and after looking at this data, what are some of the action steps that we're going to take? Amy, up to you, you want to grab a mic?
All right. Good evening, everybody. So working underneath the instructional priority, specifically over the last two years, as we've really worked on increasing our grade level work and our expectations for students, we have a list of a couple changes. So curriculum, we have made a change in our math programming, which you are all aware, we've shifted from one to another. And as part of that shift, we've provided PD, and we are also engaging in collaborative planning throughout unit by unit with the grade levels, as well as our EL providers, our special education providers, and administration in that curriculum change. So providing plenty of support in that, in that shift. We are focusing on increasing our expectations, our rigor for our students, focus on understanding grade-level tasks and expectations for all students. A lot of our work is doing student work protocols, examining student work and the assignments that we're asking students to do, ensuring that they are at a high expectation level to prepare students for these high expectation tests that they need to take in three and four. We're also doing continuous data monitoring. We utilize our academic data, both in our long-term benchmark assignments that are really given three times throughout the year, as well as this MCAS data, as you know, three and four take once a year, as well as short-term progress monitoring with our, with our math program, has online quizzes that we can monitor regularly, as well as our, we're progress monitoring and reading through our M class, which is a new addition. We've always progress monitored, but the data is much easierly, easierly, no, accessed through the, through the online platform. And we also are examining our behavioral data regularly, both disciplinary and attendance. We have a robust intervention called WIN, our What I Need Block. Every grade level has that block, so every student experiences that block, and we've made some adjustments to our Tier Two instruction to address gaps in learning, where we've identified timelines and increased our flexibility. So it's not, so we're really changing our intervention as the students learn and grow. And our pedagogy, we are focused on improving our reading instruction in line with the science of reading and deepening in math our conceptual and procedural understanding, which is all really embedded in our programming.
So at WMS, we also have changed our fifth and sixth grade math programming, which follows the same curriculum as K, or K through four. So we have that, that line. And this Eureka math that we're using right now is more in line with our seventh and eighth grade CPM model, which is a more of a exploratory model, so that, again, it has that through line from the elementary, early, middle to late middle. And we are starting the process of examining our science programming. Ms. Rivera came to our science department meeting last week and talked about the process of examining new curriculum for our science to be in line with our Mass State frameworks. We continue to monitor our data, we continuously utilize our iReady data, benchmark assessments, MCAS, attendance, discipline, and grades, all triangulating, and definitely like Mrs. Prangeli said, that Open Architect is a huge source of data for us, and we use that constantly. And then we have started examining writing samples with our ILT, and in turn, our departments are also examining writing samples. And so that leads to changes in our pedagogy. What we have found in our initial assessments of MCAS, iReady, and writing samples is that we definitely have a very weak link in our vocabulary. And so we have started as a school, working on ways to improve student vocabulary and utilize rich vocabulary daily in conjunction with writing and reading skills, which, which as you know, are part of our district priority. So everything is falling in line with, with through lines. We continue to focus on our SEI strategies, really realizing that SEI strategies are just good teaching strategies, differentiation and scaffolding for all students. And so, again, just continuation of our improvement plan, our school improvement plan, and just improving all around.
This year, we have our full, full implementation of the Open SIAID curriculum into our biology program, and it has ongoing, unit-by-unit training for our teachers throughout the school year. We'll continue with our analysis and utilization of data in our PLCs, and we've built that also now into a continuous analysis through our ILT meetings, our department meetings, and our faculty meetings. And we're looking at our iReady, our StudySync benchmarks, our MCAS scores, our writing samples, which we've started to really look at across the board this year, as well as the students' grades. With all of that, we're also looking at our attendance and discipline on an ongoing basis, and building interventions, both at the teacher and administrator level. We've built in this school year into our block scheduling, into our ninth grade and 10th grade sciences, Englishes, and math classes, a remediated block that runs side by side with our courses, so they get skill building on one day and the curriculum on the other to build upon one another with targeted skill building. And then for our pedagogy, we are improving our reading and writing skills in all academic areas, specifically using our WEADA levels to guide instruction in our classes. We just did a, a training on that last week, so it, the teachers now have it in their hands and, and are, are happy with that, to, to have a good direction to go into. And then we're providing scaffolding and differentiation on an as-needed basis.
So to come full circle, as a reminder, I'm sure that we can all regurgitate this now by heart, but all educators will intentionally plan and implement lessons utilizing district-approved curriculum materials to provide data-informed, research-based, inclusive practices so that students, particularly English language learners and students with disabilities, will demonstrate proficiency in grade-level reading and writing standards. Based on the interventions that each school described, I hope that you Based on the interventions that each school described, I hope that you can see a good alignment between those actions and our instructional priority. This data is consistent with the work that we've been focusing on and will continue to focus on, as you can see by the action steps. It is also work that is supported by our district instructional leadership team and that we've tried to establish a definite throughway between what our instructional priority is, the work at the district level, how we can support schools, how then schools can support teachers, how the ILT can then support the teams, and then all the way back. So this, this circle of communication and support across the instructional priority to promote a better achievement for all students. Are there any questions for any of us?
Who's the chair?
Member Millet?
I guess. One of the big factors, I didn't hear what we're doing about the chronic absenteeism and how that's being addressed, because that is a factor here. So can we hear some of the ideas that are being worked on?
Sure. So at the elementary school, we have our typical processes, which are outreach by the guidance. We've also built in a step for meetings with administration, although those numbers are growing very quickly. It's, it's maybe not realistic to think we can keep up with those numbers, to be entirely honest. But I am having a parent listening session to try to understand. I've invited families to come in and share with me on whether their students like coming to school or not. So we can start to understand the underlying reasons for, for the absenteeism. I think that's for, at our level, the biggest piece. How can we best support families in getting their, their children to school? Because it's really the adults that are still making those, those decisions for the kids at our level. So we will be working with families to see how we can best support them, both between administration or between administration counseling and our family engagement liaison.
I actually have attendance on my report, so I don't know if you want me to wait till then or, because I have a lot of data to share with you, but I can share that now, or I can just give you what we're doing right now.
You can give a higher level, and then you can go into it a little more detail if you want.
Okay. So what we are doing to hopefully improve attendance, which I will share the data when I do my report, is improving. We also are continuing our protocols, which we started, we set up last year in terms of really engaging families and having attendance meetings with counselors and administration. And again, like Ms. Peraliavical said, getting to the root cause of absences, as well as following protocols for letters, filing with DCF if we have to, filing with the court if we have to. We don't like to do that. We like to do the preliminary stuff first, but if we have to, we have to. I have started right from the beginning of the year, posting on Dojo Daily our attendance rate. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from that, just making parents, families aware of our daily attendance rates, because when you don't know, you don't know. And so just them seeing those numbers has, has been really positive. One of the pieces of data that I will share later, again, is our half-day attendance is the worst. And so I will continue with our, giving random Dunkin' Donut cards to one student per grade if they are in school on a half-day. Just little things that hopefully will add up. And then we'll be recognizing classes as well at our community meetings for, again, using that Open Architect. I'm able to track which grade levels have the highest attendance. So we will be giving awards or rewards for the class that has been consistently present.
We're doing all of the letters and the meetings as well, but I think one of the important changes that we had, we had the parent meetings last year in a silo with our guidance counselors, and this year, we've joined them at the table. And a lot of the responses that we get are, well, they're old enough, they can make these decisions on their own, they don't need me there, you can do it. We've really held them to that. The, the parents have been at the table with us for the few parents that we've had to have in so far, and writing plans in the moment of how to change those patterns, those behaviors. So we have some of those written already. Not a lot of time to see, you know, for the plan to go into action yet, but we've actually started to write them and to hold the parent, the student, you know, everyone accountable. So they're signing off, and hopefully they're recognizing that, you know, this is tied to their grades, this is tied to their credits, and you need to be here to do that. You just, you know, you can't just move on. So I think the big difference is having those parents with a group of us at the table.
Who's the chair?
Ms. Millet?
I think it's a district problem, not just an individual school problem. And obviously, it's a state problem. But I think one other avenue that needs to be addressed, because I have heard some negative from parents that attendance, they seem, some parents seem to think that attendance is being emphasized more than anything else. I don't think they're all seeing the connection. And I think parents need to be, I'm shown, the connection and how it is important, because you're each individually doing it at your schools. You're doing different things. And yes, some students are younger than, but it does start at a younger level, because if they continue to do it, they're going to continue to do it when they go to middle school. And they're going to continue to do it during high school. And I see an awful lot of children around town during the day that are not in school. And, but I think we need to make that connection with parents about why the importance of being in school. And I know we have the other issue, which we are dealing with, is mental health issues from students. And that's whole, and we're dealing with that as a district. But I also think we need to reach out to other school systems and see what they're doing, because it's a statewide problem. It's not just a Webster problem. It would be nice if there isn't a forum out there for you to start one, to get ideas about what other school systems are doing. Because suddenly, there might be something very easy. Somebody's going to mention something that's working, that you can try. Because the same things obviously aren't working. There is a different situation now. Ever since COVID, we know that. There's a whole different situation, and it needs to be addressed differently than just getting on the phone with the parent anymore. There has to be something different to grab them, grab their student, get them interested, see what the parent needs. Sometimes it's a parental need to, to get help with this situation. My opinion. But I think we need to use all kinds of resources to do this and not the same ones.
Thank you, Ms. Millet.
Go ahead.
A couple of points to that. I think that there are a few of us that have participated in a few family engagement, family engagement, big conferences from, with, with representation from all over the state as far as, including parent groups. And really recognizing that our, you know, one of the, the ways to address chronic absenteeism is to rethink chronic absenteeism as opportunities for family engagement. And so, so that's a direction that we are definitely going in. We, we actually brought parents with us to the summit last year to participate. Some of the parents were non-English speaking, and, you know, the conference modeled how to include parents who are from different languages. And it was really about understanding this opportunity that we have. How do we make that an opportunity? I think that we have to capture or understand, we have some data from, from students, including like the vocal data that's captured through MCAS or some other sense of belonging surveys. And we have to gather more information from our families so that we understand the situations that families are in, perhaps the supports that they might need, connections to community resources. All of those things are opportunities for us to engage with our families so that it's not just a punitive measure. In, in addition to that, I think that, that the special ed department has described in previous meetings a couple of interventions that we have started participating in. And those are to address the issues that you were talking about, the mental health issues of students. So students returning from hospitalization, who might have a difficult time and might, might end up not staying in school, or students that are engaged in like alternative suspension situations as well that we're capturing. We are getting better at developing the systems within the district to capture those days as days alternatively present, so that though they also don't count toward absences for us. So, so absolutely everything that you said, but we have to, I think that we all need to understand the issue of chronic absenteeism as opportunity for us to engage with our students and our families, to understand the reasons why students are opting out of being in school.
Thank you.
I absolutely agree. But I think everybody has to be doing the same thing. Because if a parent has a student at one school, then they go to another school, and it's handled a whole different way, it's not a good thing. Everybody needs to be on the same page. And there, your resources and the way you handle it may be a different, little different, but everybody's got to be on the same page. And that, students see that. You know, it's like going to the parent that you know you're going to get what you want, which parent that is. They need to know that that's going to be, there's going to be a consistency with whatever we do. And more parent involvement and engagement and see what they need.
And we are doing that. We are doing that as a district more. And we also have, you know, our family liaisons are also part of that mix. So they, you know, all, actually, all schools are pretty much doing similar, very similar, tracking and outreach to families. And they all have parts where they're bringing their family liaisons into the conversation and having them reach out to say, is there something else that you need beyond what you're getting on a daily? Is there something we can support you with community resources? And how can we help? Because it is a priority to get kids into school. They need to be here. So we are doing those things. Could we do them better? Sure. I think we're improving, we're growing, we're learning, we are participating, we are, we are involved in seeing what other communities are out there. The state has put out stuff for community resources that we are using and we're looking at. So it's just, you know, getting that outreach and that communication going more and more with families. I'm also starting my student focus groups again. That'll be starting up. So it's a way to connect with kids and talk with kids to find out, you know, why are you coming in? What, why are you not coming in? What is it about school to get to the root and the foundation of, you know, how they feel about being present every day?
Does this information, any of it, I'm sure some of it does, get back to the classroom teacher? Because that's where it starts. Some of this could be solved if a classroom teacher knows some of the things that you're learning at conferences. If the classroom teacher knows about them and what to look for and things, different things that they could change in their classroom because of this information. So I think it needs to go get to the classroom, too.
Thank you, Ms. Millet.
Through the chair. So I just have a follow-up comment slash question around consistency, right? We all know that students need to be in school to learn. But to that point, our teachers need to be in school as well, right, to teach. So I know that absentee, absenteeism can go both ways. So is there something around that that we're, you know, that the, the district is trying to work on to make sure that the teachers are in school, you know, and being consistent in the classrooms with the students? You know, I know we need subs a lot. Every school needs subs. Every school has this challenge as well. So I'm, I'm just curious about, about that, if, if anybody wants to speak to that.
I'll take a stab. You know, we stress the importance of what it means to be here. We're in school for 185 days. And every day that we're here, it's important. Unfortunately, we cannot control, we can only control what we can control inside. You know, we highly encourage, we, but we can't control a call-out. So unfortunately, at that level, we have no control over the situation. It is difficult to find subs. And, and when that happens, it's difficult for other teachers in school, because now you're combining classrooms and you're spreading kids out. And, you know, the learning isn't consistent.
Right.
So I couldn't agree more with you. It is important for all of us to be here during the school year, to be present and to be engaged in the learning. And when that interruption happens, it's just as important as a student not being present. So I couldn't agree with you more. Go ahead.
Through the chair.
Members.
So, and just pigging back, piggybacking off of everybody else, being an educator in a neighboring school district, we see Mrs. Pearson, the same thing on half-days, being one of our biggest absentee days. And I think for the staff and students, the biggest thing, the biggest drive to go to school for both of us is just the climate and culture. So creating a fun, safe, positive climate and culture is kind of the route that I feel is going to make the staff and students want to be there. So finding those moments to motivate or engage students in those half-days, or planning more frequent events, or even just random spirit weeks, or random days, like for the month of October, every Wednesday, we're dressing up. It's not just for the Halloween, it's for the whole month. So thinking around, you know, current events or things that we can just celebrate randomly, you know, and making it a fun, safe place for adults and students, I think is like the route, in my opinion. Especially in the middle school and high school, right? We're all there to learn. But at that age, it's also to be with your peers and make memories and socialize along with the learning. But so having those type of moments for, for everybody, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've made some gains. And I think, you know, when you're climbing a mountain, it can be easy to get caught up on where you're stumbling, but I think that there are definitely some highlights in the data that you all showed tonight. So certainly there's, we have a ways to continue to go. I'm going to make a comment that I have made several times over the course of my tenure on the school committee, both as a parent
on the school committee, both as a parent and as somebody who really cares deeply about this district. I have no doubt that our parents love their kids and our teachers love our kids too. And I think that when, when we know better, we do better. And I really think that there is a gap, sometimes in understanding with regard to what's going on in the school day and how important it is to be there and to really be an active participant in the school day. And I can say for, for, not only for myself, but even just for friends of mine who are either within this district or in different districts, states, whatever, that getting frequent, ongoing communication from the school and also from the teacher with regard to what their student is working on creates buy-in. Because we can't educate these kids on our own. We need the parents to be able to understand what we're working on. And if they don't know, they can't help us. So that ongoing connection, sharing whether it's projects that are going to be done, and I know that it's hard, and I know that some kids don't do it. Maybe they don't have the materials. There's a million reasons why we can't or shouldn't do these types of things. But looking back on my own career as a student, those are some of the things that I remember struggling through and celebrating the conclusion of afterward. So, and the other piece I think is really, so sharing what's, what's going to happen for the week and creating some excitement, some dinnertime conversation around school, and then what happened during the week, kind of a summary so that parents understand and parents are asking kids. And, you know, maybe that's a motivator. Hey, don't forget, you're going to be working on that Pocahontas project tomorrow. We have to get you to bed so you can get to school. Whatever it might take, that's maybe at the younger grade. And reading. I think the other piece is, you know, stressing the importance of reading every day. And, you know, we can make it fun, but just as a parent, I think those are some things that I see as areas that we could all improve, whether it be in, in my own home or even as a district setting that expectation that kids are reading every single day. And, and I couldn't agree more with the climate and culture. You know, when people are excited to be somewhere, they tend to show up. I love the positive reinforcement with, you know, whether it's a gift card or raffle or something like that. And I definitely think more of that might help kids be motivated or dress up or whatever the event might be on the half-day. But those are, those, I, I know studies show that those kinds of things really work for kids. But we have made progress. I think some of the things that will help us even progress even further are little things that may feel big when we get started or when we endeavor to begin them, but they're not, we're not moving mountains when it comes to these, some of these smaller things that I think will make a big impact. Any other comments or questions from the committee about this MCAS data?
Start through the chair. One more question, sorry. What was the science curriculum last year? Because they, you made like some pretty significant growth in science, which is awesome. And I know you, we are doing Open Sayad this year, at least in the high school. What was, do you know, does anybody have any idea what it was last year, the science? I don't want to put anyone on the spot. You can get back to me.
STEM scopes.
Yep.
Going through A is STEM scope. And the teachers do a lot of their own supplementing because STEM scopes does not meet the current state requirements.
Given that, you know, and the, kudos to the teachers for, you know, coming together and putting something together where you had that much growth. And it'll be interesting to see next year what Open Sayad does.
Thank you all for the presentation, excuse me, the presentation, the information. I know it can be hard to feel like you're, you're making progress, but we appreciate you.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. Good conversation. The last thing in our instructional leadership, as you know, we started our walkthroughs and so we are doing them twice a month now. The leadership team will be doing walkthroughs at all three buildings. And then at the end of the month, we regroup, we look at the trends that we saw, and we send those trends out district-wide to all the staff so they know what we're seeing. And we take that back as a team and look at things that we need to work on across the district. Okay. Moving on to other updates. In your packet, you have a copy of the annual report from the Central Mass Collaborative. Per the regulations, we are required to share the annual report with you. So just need to note that, that it's in there for your information for review. On last week, on Thursday evening, I attended the library event, Books, Bytes &amp; Blooms. It was a great evening and very well-attended. I was so happy to be able to support our community, community partners and make connections there. We're constantly in conversation with the library on how we can work together and partner to bring events into our school and vice versa. I know already we have a couple of ideas. They reached out to me. They've applied for a grant. They're trying to get an author into Webster Middle School for the students there. And then they're looking at potentially reaching out and somehow getting a future event of our students down to the library to see some, you know, a version of the Books, Bytes &amp; Blooms to do at a school event, something similar to that. So we're talking ideas and working together, but they're a great group and we look forward to continued partnership with them. I think, hope you have Unified Basketball, so I think I'm going to skip over that, right? I'm going, I'm not going to talk about that. Then the Webster Middle School, I don't think Heidi has this on her report, so, and I don't know if Dr. Mackay wants to add anything. We were recently awarded the 21st Century Grant for after-school at, well, the ASOS Grant, I should say. All these acronyms and different names for the after-school program at Webster Middle School. And the amount, I believe it was 12,000, 12,500. Do you have anything you want to update about the program?
So we're happy to report that we already have recruited some students. Our anticipated start date is November 4th. And so what we're trying to do is recreate a consistent after-school program instead of just drop-in times for like homework help. And so we have two days a week where the kids are going to be doing some project-based learning. And we're starting with crime scene investigation, which is a really high-interest thing for kids after-school. And the other two days are academic support, which can also turn into MCAS support as the time approaches. So we're, we're happy to report that that's underway.
Thank you. Any questions about that? No? And then on Friday, Dr. Mackay and I met with our statewide system of support. We were introduced to our new team that we have there, doing some realignment across the state with their teams. So we connected with our new point person, Grace. And we have two previous members that were on our team. We'll be unpacking that meeting at our leadership team. And I will be attending an upcoming webinar with the Associate Commissioner on tomorrow, Thursday, to get some more information about our partnership with them throughout the school year. And then lastly, on my other updates, we have an update on our Bartlett High School graduation date. Ms. Neves, do you want to give a update on that?
So when we went to book Indian Ranch, the first week of school, they are booked on June 5th, June 6th. I asked how soon if we could get in there. They do have the 5th available or the 13th available at Indian Ranch if we want to change the date.
So right now, we took the 5th. We figured we'd do it on a Thursday versus a Friday in the evening outdoors. So that'll be a change.
Okay with that? I'll tell them we're go.
Yep. Yep. I don't think the seniors are going to mind much.
Till that is booked.
Yes, we did book the 5th. We held the 5th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. If the chair doesn't mind, I'd like to just take my two items out of order. Just one brief update relative to maintenance across the district. We did have, within the district office, we had a challenge with our HVAC system. Our thermos, thermostores actually were either shorted or failed in the central office. So it was a bit frigid in aspects of the central office for a period of time, and it was warm in other areas. Luckily, the sensors were under warranty, were able to get replacement parts and have that repaired. So that's all I have from a maintenance standpoint. What I'd like to do tonight is rather than giving you a verbal update on what's been going on in the building project, I thought we'd do a little show and tell tonight, although it's not really showing up great because I think my pictures are too big. Okay. So, is that the first one? Just want to make sure. Okay, thanks. All right. So want to walk you through so you can see how things are shaping up as they're still working on the rough structure in here, particularly in the auditorium area with the structural steel. So what you're seeing here is the upper balcony, or the future upper balcony of the auditorium as they're placing that steel. And you can see the cursor moving around in there. So it's really exciting to start seeing it take shape. We can move on. So the next few that you're going to see is down in the basement. So as a reminder to everyone with the renovation, our real mechanical rooms are moving from this section of the building into the basement of the community wing. And so this is a lot of the rough ductwork you're seeing, some of the plumbing work, as well as electrical work that are taking shape in this picture, as well as another angle that you'll see in the next picture as it starts shaping out. So you can see some of the electrical, electrical panels in there and the work starting to form. Oops, just one more. In this area, this is also the basement. We talked a lot about this, but this is where the pump is. And as they're finishing this before they pour the concrete, the pump is getting placed in there. Give you a little view of what's going on in the gymnasium. It's a pretty busy area. They are beginning some preliminary scraping and painting in the gymnasium. In fact, we're finalizing the official colors in the gymnasium. We got our submissions on the samples of the paint and we are making that decision in there. So they are working. We have this picture, I think I have another one right after this as it shapes up. So what you're seeing in this picture is because the storage room no longer exists in there, this is the new drywall that was put up at the end of the gymnasium to restructure the look and feel in the gymnasium. This view that we have here is where the new loading dock is going. So you're seeing a lot of cylinders, I mean, cinder blocks here, and that's the new cove that will be there for the loading dock that is also moving from this section down to the other section. So things are starting to take shape. We'll move on to a little bit of external photos. Oh, some more cinder blocks. Yeah, cinder, they are exciting at this point in the project. The next couple that I have is really the curbing that's going on around the section of the building that's under construction. So the next few pictures, so the granite curbing that's going in. We actually just had a meeting today. We're talking about when we'll be laying that foundation in, I mean, or the concrete in around those areas. I think we're going to tentatively plan that for Thanksgiving week when it's a little lighter. So we'll start seeing that whole exterior around the building starting to take shape. The fences will start getting moved back a bit more. So things are progressing. The other thing I'll mention is that the subcontractors, as well as the GC, have increased the hours that they're working per day, as well as they have been coming in on the weekend because they're putting a big press on to make sure that we're closing things up and getting it ready as we approach the winter months. I know, Linda, I saw that. I've been on that. I think that's it. Okay. So exciting, things are moving along, taking shape. We've really been seeing some really good progress and we're really getting excited as we start moving into these phases and starting to see it come to life as opposed to pulling out of the demo, starting all the rough work, and it's really taking shape. We're still on target to do the phasing transition during April vacation. In fact, I will be meeting with Mrs. Neves next week. We're going to reconfirm who's moving during that break so that we can get ahead of the planning as we work with our OPM on how that move will look, when do we need to be ready. So we have a lot of right-to-left planning to do to make sure that the right people are notified so they're aware if they're moving and that they can be available to get things unpacked, right? And ready when people come back from vacation. So there's a lot of logistics that we need to work through. And so we're beginning that planning now to make sure we stay ahead of that. Any questions?
Does that conclude your updates?
That does conclude for now. I'm coming back later in the agenda.
All right.
Through the chair.
Thank you for those updates, yes, Ms. Millet.
I'm sorry.
I just happen to have a question when you, we were done. Are they going to need more portable classrooms?
No. No, we're, we're just sticking with the modulars that we have.
Yeah.
And what we do is we have a transition plan for each phase in terms of who's going where. And so we won't need any additional space as we do this because some of the space that we have in the community wing won't be transitioned until it's intended space until later in the project. They'll be used as classrooms until we're ready to transition it. Like, for example, the weight room, right? That, the weights won't be moved back into there because that space needs to be used. So at this time, there's no plans for extended classroom space. And I don't think we project that there ever will be.
Thank you, Ms. Kontos.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Hello again. So the first item that I have listed is an update about our fundraising. And so as you probably know, we did a major fundraiser at the beginning of the year. We sold a calendar raffle. So the way that works is we ask people to pay $20 for a raffle ticket and the names go in and every day there's a prize. They can, if they win, their name gets put back in, so you have multiple opportunities to win a prize. We had 26 businesses donate to us and two of our banks gave us money directly without being on the calendar for a prize. And so in total, we raised $8,580 towards our Student Activities Fund, which will go directly to field trips. So that's over 400 tickets sold. And if you add that, if you do the math, it doesn't add up because we did take some of the money out to do a couple of cash prizes. So our total, our total earnings were $8,500. I was an English teacher, not a math teacher. And we have our next fundraiser coming up on Thursday. We are trying something a little new. If any of you have seen The Masked Singer on TV, we are going to be doing The Masked Teacher. And so we have eight of our staff members dressing up and being brave and singing under the mask. And then we will reveal themselves. And so we are charging $3 for students and $5 for others because it is a fundraiser and then concessions will be sold too. So hopefully that will be a fun event for all. Continuing our community connections, we have Gentex coming in next Tuesday. They come in every year and fix students' eyeglasses that are broken. And then they also have a program that if students need glasses, they have funding for that. So we, if you are needing to bring your glasses in, you can actually send them in ahead of time and we'll hold them until Tuesday so the kids don't forget on Tuesday. And then we have Safety Quest coming again from MatFree. And they were actually supposed to come in October, but something happened and they will be coming on November 5th. Unfortunately, we do not have the princess coming this year, but it will still be a good time with Safety Quest. The fifth graders really enjoyed that last year. And then we are going to continue with our tradition of a Veterans Day ceremony at the middle school. We've been kind of experimenting with different days based on the feedback from veterans. So this year, we're actually going to try the Thursday, November 7th. And so that will be at 1 o'clock for, if you guys are welcome to attend that. I- I had put out to staff and to families to see if anybody had a veteran or a current service member that would like to speak, but I didn't get any responses. But the good news is I have a family member who I'm going to force to come. So that will be that. And then, like I said, I wanted to update on attendance. So I have some data to share with you. So our year-to-date percentage is at 94.1%, which is good, but it's still not great. I would love to see it over 96%. However, this is up 3.1% from this date at exactly this date last year. So we do have some gain. In September of '23, we were at 92%, and in September '24, we have 94.6%. In October of '23, we had 90.4% average, and our October currently is 93.2%. So the gains are small, but they are gains. We have, unfortunately, still a lot of chronic absentees. Currently, we're at 112 students who are considered chronic. And being that we've only been in school, you know, 40 days, that contributes to, if you're out, that's a big number. So some of the things are, we have had some suspensions. COVID, as you know, is on the uprise, and this round of COVID seems to be hitting hard again. So we're seeing kids and faculty out for three to five days with this round of COVID. So we kind of scattered in that data. In September of last year, we had 6% chronic absentee, and this September, we had 6.3. In October of '23, we had 8.2, and we're down in October with 7.9. However, we're in the middle of October. So we have 96, excuse me. We had three days of school so far where we were over 96% attendance. We've had 26 days where it's been 93 to 96% and six days where it's been 90 to 93. And then the half-day, we were below 90%. We had 67 students absent. That's 11.7% of our students. And so I want to go back to what Ms. Greglio was saying earlier about doing some different things on half-days. That's what we had been doing previously. And when the surveys, we did surveys last year about why half-days people didn't attend. And one of the reasons was they didn't feel like it was educational. They didn't need to be there because we weren't teaching. So that's why we are not doing those things on half-days anymore. It is strictly academic. We do scatter other things throughout the year. We have a spirit week next week, actually, before Halloween. So it's not that we don't do those things, but we're not doing them on half-days. So that is attendance. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair, I just have a comment. Your veterans' ceremony is very inspirational and moving every year. And I appreciate it. It's done very, very nicely.
Thank you, Ms. Mellett.
It's an excellent tribute to our local veterans.
That's why I want to try to get them, get the right dates to get them there because it's for them, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. Thanks for saying that, Ms. Mellett.
Through the chair.
Members Gregor.
I just have a question. How was the motivational speaker?
He was very good. Yeah, the kids really enjoyed him. Honestly, he wasn't my cup of tea, but it's not about me. It's about the kids, and they loved it. So as long as they found inspiration in it, that's why we did it, so.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Peterson? Well, thank you for your updates. What's happening at the middle school? The next item on our agenda is an update from our student rep. Good evening, Hope.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to start off with updates for this past, the past few weeks. We had our sophomore pie fundraiser that I had talked about in the weeks prior ended October 21st. We also got the winter sports sign-ups were sent out and the emails for high school students. We also have our NHS invitations were sent out and accepted. Acceptance letters were sent out. And as the NHS president, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that they are invited to the ceremony. We had soccer, the boys' soccer team had their senior night on the 16th. Volleyball also had their senior night on the 21st. And then we had a unified basketball game this past Thursday in Oxford, which is our home, like, court, I guess. And we played Knit Monk. We did lose, but from what I heard, I wasn't able to attend that game. But from what I heard, everybody had a lot of fun. We also, this past weekend, we put on our haunted hallways. The yearbook put on haunted hallways. That was a really big success. We had a few students that put a lot of effort into it. They set up all the decorations. They were there from like 8:00 in the morning till 5:30, setting up, preparing, doing everybody, they had makeup done, they had all. It was a very good success. They had, they raised about $607 between the bake sale and that. And then we also, the same day, had the PBIS trunk retreat, which was also the 20th. We had Jostens present class rings to the junior and senior classes. And then we had, today, we had the DECA Fall State Leadership Conference. And then the Boys Cross Country also yesterday participated in the Swickel Championship. For upcoming events, we have, the cheerleaders are putting on a fundraiser called Fill My Bow. This is put on between October 14th to the 28th. We have the First Nichols Leadership Field Trip on Thursday, the 24th, so this Thursday. We have seniors have the ability to set up financial aid meetings with their guidance counselors and a representative. FAFSA is not open until December, but we are still having financial aid meetings through CSS. And then we have the Varsity Senior Night this Friday, which is obviously a home game. And then finally, we have a upcoming Unified Basketball Game, Monday, the 28th, so next Monday. That's it.
Thank you, Hope. Lots going on.
And I will say, the haunted hallways was pretty scary. I walked through with my 83-year-old mom who jumped and screamed. They were pretty realistic, so.
They put a lot of effort into it, and they wanted to make sure it was actually like a haunted house, and people actually were scared, and they were very successful.
They did a good job, and they were very, very convincing with the makeup and everything like that. So they did a great job. The trunk or treat was excellent, and I'm thrilled by the Unified Basketball Game. It was great. And so I appreciate the efforts with that this year and the collaboration with Oxford. It's wonderful that our students get to do this. And seeing so many staff present at the games and families cheering on the teams and the collaboration between the two districts is just, it's awesome. So it's lots of good things going on. So we appreciate that.
Great, thanks for your updates, Hope. Any questions or comments from the committee for Hope? No, all right. So the next item on the agenda, I'm actually going to take things a little bit out of order. Mr. Peranto, are you back there? Would you like a turn?
I'm still awake.
Yeah, please.
Why is for you for a while? This is the new league that is being adopted right now. I'm sure you haven't seen this yet, so I figured I'd pass this out.
Yeah, and while you're doing that, I'll just say this is a discussion about a new athletic league called the Central Massachusetts Athletic Conference. And we'll take a minute to look at these. Thank you.
While you're cruising through those two, pity if anyone's interested in going to the Hall of Fame Saturday. I'll give you a pass for you. Let me know, and I can give you one of the passes. We have actual seedings.
Okay.
I'll also appear and answer your question. I can't answer any.
Great.
Mr. Peranto, who is being entered into the Hall of Fame?
Well, we have 12 people getting in. The 1993 track team is getting in.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
1993 track team's getting in. John Bialy Scoop is getting in as a contributor. And then there is 12 other inductees getting in, too. I don't have the list in front of me right now, and I don't want to miss anybody on mic right now. So there's 12 other people getting in dating back all the way from 1946 to current 2017. There's three kids getting in from that era also.
I have the names on my desk, so I'll scan them and send them over to you.
Great. So, Mr. Peranto, do you want to give us maybe an overview of what the change is all about? Why this is coming about and what we can expect?
Sure. So the Southern West County League has been in existence. On the top of my head, it was the Board of Conference back when I was in school. So you're talking 40 years and almost 40, at least. So the Southern West County League has been, I think, since 1998, I believe it is. And going by the years right now, being in the school this long. So this came into effect around now is that because we find that over time right now, it's very difficult for smaller schools like us to compete. So with the bigger schools right now, with Tantascwa, Northbridge, Auburn, Grafton, which is the most biggest growing community in the state of Massachusetts right now, we can't compete with the majority of our sports right now. By joining this thing, it helps out the bigger schools because they can, because they'll be playing against the city schools. In every division, though, so it's very unique, I guess. So it's not going to be like, okay, Western North, for example. Western North has won back-to-back state championships right now. So they'll be Division One in basketball. But in volleyball, they can't compete in volleyball. So even though they're a bigger school, they are going to be down in the lower division, though, too. So every sport will be sectioned in a different division. They go by power rankings with this. So this power rankings is big in the state of Massachusetts right now for all sports, for the state competition. So they'll go by that over the last two years now for power rankings because we know that maybe a team might be, you know, they might be getting better, they might be getting worse. And there is a peel process of this division right now, too. There's a lot of moving parts for this right now. And it's going to be very difficult for people to understand. That's been traditionalist right now with the Southern West County League. Okay, you play your 11 schools one time, and then you can go out and get your independent games. Now, you could be put in the vision, like for us, for example. Let's say, let me think of a sport off the top of my head. I think it's basketball. I think we have, we'll have Oxford, I believe, on there. Still Quaybuck's still on there. Then it goes Keefe Tech. I think it might go Monty Tech still, too. And I'm not sure the other, I think it might be Oxbridge for boys' basketball. And then other schools, other sports could be different. Like volleyball is another different one for us. We have grid numbers, but our power rankings are very low. So we will be playing schools similar to us. It's going to help us competition-wise. And hopefully, it helps us populate our sports a little bit better right now, which we're struggling to do. I think it's, for me, I think it's the best, best for our program right now. And on the offset of this right now, with all the schools that are involved, dual valley, DVC, Interhigh, and the tech schools right now, if we do not do this, and that was brought up to us, is that we'd become independent, which would be an athletic director's nightmare. Because if we go independent, we'd never be able to get a schedule. And then our game schedules would be even less right now, too. It would be difficult for me to get games each time. By going to this new Central Mass Athletic Conference, it'll enable us to, it might hurt us a little bit. The only downfall for us is because you'll be sectioned in different divisions. For the spring, we'd be the biggest thing because you have baseball, softball, and tennis traveling together on the same bus. Now, they could be in different divisions, which means we could have to have more buses. Fortunately for us, we have the vans, so it'll help out the tennis program probably, too, and possibly the softball because the numbers may not be as large. 15 people can own those passenger buses. So, but not having JV right now, currently, we save up money in transportation, so we'll be able to make up on the other end of it right now. This league will be, is coming into fruition in fall of 2025. So it's moving fast. It's been going on, as you said, seen here, it's been for the last couple of years right now and maybe even before that. There's been a couple of people through Central Mass Athletic Directors Association that has been doing a lot of work with that. I've been on a few boards for that, for helping them in different areas. So I guess basically what it's turning into, make it easy for it to understand is that if you think about the mid-watch, if people are familiar with mid-watch, they have five different conferences there, or divisions, A, B, C, and D, E. They are made up of District 3 through the state of Massachusetts. So the whole mid-watch is District 3. In District 2, which is us, we had all these multiple Southern West County League, dual valley, Interhigh, and DVC. We were all in one. So I guess we're kind of like doing what the mid-watch is doing. It's helped them out over the years right now. So we're trying to, I guess, pitch a rest with those, what they're doing right now and mirror them. For example, just to make it a little bit easier for us scheduling-wise, as well as demographically. We don't want to, I know it's going to be a little bit difficult, but if we got to go play Keefe Tech, it's an hour away. We already play them in the schedule now. We've gained a great relationship with them. It's going to be a little bit difficult, I guess, for traditionalists more than anything because I had a hard time wrapping myself around this because I've been around so long, dealing with the Board of Conference. Board of Conference is made up really of the Southern West County League. And now we're going to have to gain more relationships with those schools right now. I guess change is in order for us right now for us to compete. If you look at our programs over the past few years, it hasn't been strong, and it's been lopsided, especially when we play teams in our Southern West County League right now. For instance, Taskwars, the Graftons. We can't get girls, for instance, to go play these games right now, too. And we're suffering in these sports right now, getting people to participate. And we think that's one of the reasons why, is because it's demoralizing right now going onto the courts right now, or the fields.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopolis?
Does this going to affect the Southbridge game? Football?
No. I'm going to say no right now because the new formula did come out. I don't know if you saw, have seen it. So it did come out, and that was brought to my attention when we had the meeting out in, I can't remember where we were. Western North, we're in the auditorium over the summer, and that was brought up that the South, because football's a different beast, remember now, too? So you're not going to have, there's their divisions through state rankings. We get a schedule that's made up for us by the committee. But they put in, they'll give you four games within your conference. So for instance, this past year, we have Southern West County League. We play, there's four teams there, and then the committee gives us four more games to make up our eight games. So we'll get four within that division. But they did have Southbridge in there because Southbridge would be part of our, in the football area. And they said, well, you'll play Southbridge on Columbus Day. And I said, no, I will not agree upon this right now. I never agree upon it at all. And the new football formula that's going to be, so getting off of the CMAC right now, too. Football's a different beast. Like I said, again, the proposal that came out right now through the state, which is going to be approved by next week, was discontinuing Thanksgiving at one point. And then the other proposal was keeping Thanksgiving, making it more populated again throughout the state, and counting, they're using the Connecticut formula, which would count 10 games, and the Southbridge game would have counted towards your power rankings. They can't do that because that's going to be cut right now. That's never going to be approved. A, because in the football, they were going to try to make that Southbridge game count Thanksgiving for the power rankings. And then if you made the playoffs, you would have to play the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, the Saturday of that same week, and then come back and play either Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at Gillette for the state championship. So the Sports Medicine Committee said, that's never going to happen. You're not going to play three games in less than 14 days. Actually, it would be like 10 days, some of them, for some schools. So that's going to be, that's not going to be adopted. So what we think that's going to be a So what we think that's going to be approved right now will be keep the traditional Thanksgiving Day game. You can have almost the same formula we're doing right now. Eight games, play two games before Thanksgiving. And then if you're going to be in the state finals, you'll play the week after Thanksgiving. So I guess in a long, in a long elaborated way right now too, is that Thanksgiving will still stay on. Southbridge is agreeing with that. And there's a few, obviously, just not in Central Mass because obviously we know that we are the second highest-running rivalry right now. But Eastern Mass has a few of them out there too that's even bigger. And they are, and Eastern Mass usually controls most of these votes for the football committee because they're a bigger group that's controlling the votes, I guess, in one way. Did I explain that, I guess? Correct. I could have been a little bit quicker with it. Any other questions?
So the majority of Southern, all of Southern Wester County is now transferring over to?
Southern West County will become the CMAC now, starting in the fall of 2025.
Swickle no more?
Swickle, no. As of spring of this coming year, Swickle will be no more. Central Mass Tournament is no more in the spring either. The Central Mass Tournament, that's we, for the soccer and basketball. Basketball doesn't, basketball, because you have the clock tournament number two, we can either opt for the clock tournament or the Central Mass Tournament. If you don't make the clock tournament, you can go to the Central Mass Tournament. But that Central Mass Tournament is going away as of the winter of this year. They found that, the committee found that it wasn't well-receptive amongst most of the towns. So everyone decided just to play their maximum amount of games before the state tournament.
Okay. So if I understand, it sounds like the league that we're currently in is going to cease to exist. This is the, the new league that, that we basically need to be a part of in order to maintain participation in the, in scheduling and working with all of the districts and even some new districts that we haven't worked with before. And as an additional kind of benefit for us, will be more fairly matched against the schools that we're competing with across all the different sports.
It's competitive. I think the competitive balance is going to be the biggest thing right now. And you'll be, find some schools because, for instance, you know, we're going to, Tantascwa is the biggest school that's out there in our conference right now. You know, with the majority of over a thousand kids. But then you're going to say, people are going to come and say, why are we playing Western North in volleyball? Because you're going to look at the competitive balance that's been over their program over the past few years. So even though their school has been larger, they struggle in their program right now. So it's the competitive balance, I guess, across the board that we're looking for. Not equity as much as part as just, you know, having the kids, you know, feel good about themselves, being able to compete. And that's where, where we're standing right now with some of our programs. And then you have the bigger programs that are, you know, excelling in some of the sports and it's helping those programs through the bigger schools because they're able to boost their power rankings. They're looking to boost their power rankings for the state. We're just looking to compete right now too and create some equity across. You know, and some of our sports that have obviously been successful, football this past year, will be, it'll, you know, we'll up our schedule because every two years we can, we can go up. We can try to get more competitive games for us to make, make our power rankings better. Obviously, the athletic director's going to have to do his job and make sure these people are able to get the most better, beneficial part of their power rankings each time. It can be a work, but obviously it's something that we've been working on for a lot of years right now.
Great. And it sounds like a win for the district. There's no downside here.
Not really, except for the transportation part, that could be, especially in the spring. But hopefully we're creative with our bus situations. You know, again, if we, if we're traveling to Northbridge, then maybe I can schedule a game with Oxford at the same time and then be able to drop one off and we'll get the other.
Great. Thank you for explaining this.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Great. Do we need a vote to approve this or this is just informational?
This was informational. I didn't think we needed to vote for this. All schools are doing it, participating. It's going away, so we don't really have an option.
Right. Okay, great.
It'll be mostly the principals. They'll dissolve the, because they're the head of, of the Southern West County League. They'll dissolve that. They're the president of the Southern West County League. They'll be sending a note to each district to tell them that the, the league has been dissolved.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pronto.
You're welcome.
All right. So we're going to go back in order now at this point. We're going to move into old business. And the first item on the agenda under old business is the final reading of Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. Is there any discussion around that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the final reading of Policy ACAB, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation. Is there any discussion around that policy? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the final reading of Policy ACAR, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. Any discussion around that policy? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the final reading of Policy ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure. Is there any discussion around that policy? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the final reading of Policy ACGB, Title IX Sexual Discrimination Grievance Procedure. Is there any discussion around this policy? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda under new business is the discussion of food service, summer, and finance report. Good evening, Kelsey.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a brief overview of kind of the conclusion of last fiscal year. We definitely, from a food service standpoint, ended in a positive position. Our revenue increased around thirteen point four percent in comparison to fiscal year twenty-three. General knowledge, but last year, eighty percent of our revenue came from federal reimbursement. And we did see an increase in that, which follows some data I'm going to give you, that we are seeing increases in participation, therefore we're getting increases in reimbursement. And also reimbursement rates for both the state and federal levels have gone up. In comparing last school year to school year twenty-two, twenty-three, I was pretty amazed at some numbers of meal growth. Again, I've seen, I've seen the growth, but I have not sat down to compare year to year. Last year, across all three cafeterias, we served five thousand nine hundred sixty-three more lunches than school year twenty-two, twenty-three. And I'm sure you've heard me say many times at school committee meetings that our goal has been breakfast, breakfast, breakfast. I was so pleased and say this with pride that in comparison to school year twenty-two, twenty-three, over the course of the whole school year last year, we served thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-three more breakfasts than the year before. Yes, and I promise that's accurate because I was just, you know, I ran the data through all mosaic of my state reports and that increase is accurate. It just shows the incredible growth of student participation, the hard work of the food service staff. And I think it's also showing, you know, we're serving our students what they want within the guidelines from state and federal funding sources. And I just hope it continues to grow. Just to give a side example, at Bartlett, school year twenty-two, twenty-three, a good breakfast for us was around forty. Sometimes we'd hit sixty breakfasts. And today, we just had a hundred thirty-five breakfasts, which is our largest yet. So there is an upward trend. Our expenses increased in comparison to fiscal year twenty-three by around seven percent. Mainly food costs are high. As well, we're doing a lot, as we've talked about, more local, more fresh produce, and more scratch cooking. So that will also kind of counter with the expenses. Any questions so far? And regarding food waste costs, I know it was a concern that was brought up and a very valid one, switching from prepackaged and more processed to scratch cooking. We have been mindful about food cost waste that comes with more fresh foods. And reduction strategies for waste include appropriate sales forecasting, know, knowing roughly what we're going to sell, how much, who will take that meal that day, offering meal components more than once a week. For example, if we're offering apples, oranges, and strawberries, you're going to see them on the line for, until they're used up that week. And of course, continuing using the share bins. And lastly, regarding expenses due to our finance, our funding situation and our financial standpoint, last year, we were able to make improvements to our cafeterias and their equipment. And some examples are new food processors that will really help that meal prep, a new hot holding warmer at the middle school, service racks and service carts at all the schools. Any questions about our financial standpoint in food service? All right. And my favorite thing everyone knows to talk about is the summer. This summer was so, so good this year and so successful. We were able to offer again, no-cost nutritious meals to the youth in our community. We started off just to highlight, I know most of this has already been talked about, but we had our kickoff event for the first time at the library, which was a major success. We had a visit from Project Bread, Desi, and Jim McGovern because we were chosen to be a stop for the Summer Food Rocks campaign, and that was so fun. And every week, we had activities, freebies, raffle items, the ever-growing popularity of the sunglasses and backpacks that get requested every year. And it just kept families coming back. And the library is growing towards our goal of that being a safe, fun, community spot for families to come, not only for a free meal, but for engagement as well. In total, over the summer, we served five thousand eight hundred eighty-six meals in July and August. But that is also including enrolled students. They come together for the same meals as well. And at the library site specifically, we served nine hundred forty-six meals, which more than doubles last year, which we served four hundred twenty-nine. So the awareness, the demand is growing and hopefully it continues to grow. Last year, we ran the program for nine days in July and nine days in August, eighteen total days. This year, we did fifteen days in July, nine in August for twenty-four days. So I think kind of expanding the days that we run it showed that the demand was there since our participation numbers were there. So we will be back next year for hopefully another great summer. And not much to say so far about this school year. And a positive note, we are fully staffed at the moment. We're continuing new meals, continuing taste tests, and we will be doing another round of student feedback surveys because that's the most important thing, is to give the students what they want, to make sure they're taking a meal, putting all reimbursement and standards aside. Getting kids the meal at the end of the day is what we're here for and exposing them to nutrition and new foods. Any questions?
That's great. We can always count on you for some great updates, Kelsey. Always good news over here. So thirty-four thousand more breakfasts served in a school year, is that right?
That would be from the end of June to the start of the school year. Sorry, I said that backwards. That'd be the start of the school year, last school year, to the end of June.
So a school year?
Yes, the whole school year.
And the same, over five thousand more lunches in a school year, right?
Yes.
So I'm not a math whiz either, Ms. Peterson. But that's like over a hundred and eighty more breakfasts a day.
A day, yes.
And almost thirty more lunches.
Yes.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. And the majority of the breakfast is from the Bartlett bumping up participation. But at Park Ave, we also went from about, it was about eighty-one, eighty-two percent for breakfast. Now we're at eighty-six. And the middle school switched from, without boring you with nutrition facts, school nutrition, offer versus sir, from regular service to offer versus serve, which is more so the students can pick the components on their tray, for breakfast and lunch. So their breakfast numbers went way up too.
Oh, great.
I think it was just a matter of finding ways to not only offer what the students want, but getting them to enjoy taking part in meal service. And, you know, I'll put the plug that we are always open to feedback, even if it might seem critical. I love to tell the students that, tell me what you're thinking. Tell me something you'd want to see on, you know, the line and within reason, we can make it happen.
That's great.
I did the rough math and, because I, that's why I had to stop myself and go back because I said, if you're going off a ten-month schedule, that's about three thousand extra breakfasts a month. And I checked every corner and I couldn't believe it. The pride I feel for the food service team in unveiling that data was just, I can't put it into words.
That's deserved. I mean, it's, I just, I divided it into a hundred, a hundred and eighty-five school days.
Yeah.
You know, but it's a lot. It's a lot more work, I imagine.
Yes.
Kids have so many decisions that are made for them on a daily basis. To have choice in, in their meals is really special, so, and clearly they appreciate it.
We're hoping to keep them growing.
Good deal. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mallett?
I just want to say that's awesome. And do you still do, like, sampling, sampling of new foods?
Yes.
That used to be my favorite part.
Yes. This year, we have been off to a slow start. It was kind of a work-intensive switch from summer to school year, which happens every year. But on this Monday coming up, actually, we're doing a taste test at Bartlett. A little different, I won't be running this taste test. We have a vendor coming in to sample some new chicken sliders. And I'm hoping to be able to do that, not just me showing you fresh fruits and veggies, but also having professional vendors come in so you guys, the students in reference, have even more feedback to say, you know, we want this on our plates. But Harvest of the Month taste tests are coming back. Next month is kale, so I'll keep you updated on that.
Kale chips.
The kale chips, yes, they were a big hit.
Good deal. Well, thanks again for your updates. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I just want to say, nice job, nice work. It's exciting when, you know, we first started, when I was overseeing the food service department and had Ellen in and we were really trying to figure out how to incorporate more healthy, home-cooked meals, the garden. And when Ellen left and Kelsey came in, we were, it was so important to us to find the right person to take over and to run with it. And Kelsey, you've certainly done that. You're excelling, you're doing, you're everything I thought you would do for the food service department. And I love the energy and the focus on kids and giving them what they want in a healthy way and introducing them to new things. So, nice job, nice work. And the ladies rock.
Yes, one more shout-out to the food service staff. They are a dream team.
They work hard. They work really hard.
They do. That's great. Well, thank you once again.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the initial capital improvement plan. Ms. Kontos?
Hi, everyone. Just, I want to echo the superintendent's comments about Kelsey. My experience with Kelsey since I've joined the district has been, Kelsey is super energetic. She works really well with her team. Her team is very committed, very receptive to feedback, and she really drives things forward and we are very lucky to have her. So, all right, let's move on to the capital improvement plan. So you do have some information in your packet. Before I dive into that, I just want to kind of ground everyone on what the capital improvement plan is. Is so every town department develops a five-year capital improvement plan. That plan historically is due really by mid to late February of each year. This year, the town accountant has asked for an initial plan to be submitted by the end of October. That plan is not a plan that we're necessarily committed to, but it's some of the things that we're considering to include on our capital improvement plan. So what you have in your packet right now is a list of capital improvement items. They're segregated into three categories. We have three items in the plan that are in progress. That's just really for your awareness. We have five that are planned and those are either planned for this year or next year. We have five that are planned, and those are either planned for this year or next year. And those are items that we've already received funding in either town appropriation for or other types of funding to support those efforts. The ones that we really want to talk about tonight are the seven new items that are on the list. These are seven items that we have identified as worth exploring for estimates as well as consideration to be considered to be on our capital improvement plan, but not necessarily the items that we would be putting forward for the next town meeting, right? So the goal is really to develop the plan of the items that require attention, to then identify the priority, and then when we would move forward to seek funding from the town to support those items. So while the agenda item reads as an approval, I think what we want to do tonight, because this is an initial list, it has no prioritization, and you see no estimates associated with that. Really trying to get something like that done by the end of October, given everything else that we have going on at the end of the fiscal year and at the start of the school year, we just don't have the capacity to go out and get all of those estimates. So what we want to do at this point is just submit the eight items as here are the items that we're considering as an expansion of our capital improvement plan. And then what we will be doing is seeking estimates, and then we'll start evaluating these from a priority standpoint to determine which ones we actually want to bring forward to the school committee to then support to bring to town meeting in May. Let me just pause there, that's a lot of information. And just want to keep you in the loop. We certainly don't want to submit something into town hall without you having some awareness about what we've put together as an initial starting point. Again, no numbers, no prioritization. This really is awareness only. Certainly open it up to questions. So you'll see, actually, I want to just give a good example. What we're, what we're doing as we look at our buildings and the age of our buildings is we know that Webster Middle School, based on its age, the roof will be out of warranty, right? At some point in time, we will have to look at work on that. Do we think that's coming up in the next year? No, but it's something that has to be on this plan that we have to continue to monitor and evaluate and determine what's the right timing to take on an activity like that because it's a huge undertaking, and what would the cost be and how would we approach that? That's just one, for example, that's an item that wasn't on there previously. So what I will be doing is working with our head custodians as well as with Mr. Pronto on some of the items that you see on here as we develop, what, how do we want to approach these items that we require attention? Are there both short-term and long-term approaches that we want to take? And then develop the best rough order of magnitude estimates that we can do at this point in the process. So I'll pause there, see if anybody has any questions. If there are none, what we will proceed to do is we will send this down as an initial list. Again, it won't be with any priorities or any potential estimates or anything that's binding.
Ms. Kontos, what's the timeline or plan for prioritizing and pricing these items?
So the expectation is that we'd be able to submit our official list by the end of February. So I am hoping to have that to the school committee in the month of January.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of a .5 nurse assistant for Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm here to request the approval of a .5 nurse assistant to share between Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School. This year, we have had a difficult time finding subs. We've had some increased needs in medical for our students, some higher medical needs that need monitoring. And it's difficult when a nurse is out to have the coverage, to be able to make sure that we're maintaining the rest of the school and we're able to monitor that. We've also had some, you know, health issues with inside of our own nursing staff, which has caused them to be out more frequently and with the difficulty in finding subs. I think this .5 position would help us with some continuous support during the day. This would be funded by salary savings that we have in our budget right now from some positions not being filled that will offset the nursing.
So, Mrs. Pringle, that will fund the position for this year. What's the long-term plan on that?
So we need to look at that going into next year. Definitely, if there's a continued need for it, we're going to have to add it to our budget for next year and look at funding that position. You're going to see that with the net, the two requests that we have coming before you tonight. It's going to be an impact to next year's budget.
Any questions or comments from the committee with regard to this halftime nurse assistant position for the middle school and high school?
Through the chair.
Members of the committee?
What's the qualification for the nurse? Can it be like a CNA or does it have to be?
It's an LPN or RN.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the addition of a .5 nurse assistant to be split between Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adam.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of four FTEs for additional ABAs, one at Bartlett High School and three at Park Avenue Elementary School.
I'm going to turn this over to Kathy Barris.
Hello. I just had to come forward tonight.
Being my last.
For something else. So, thank you very much. So this year has been a, really off to a very big challenge in special education. We've had a significant number of students who have moved into the district with high needs. Just as an example, this first week of school, my, our new team leader at the elementary school sent us a list of, what was it, fourteen new students in special ed, three of whom required one-to-one support. So we did a very thorough and careful analysis of the students that we already had in the district who had paraprofessional support, both IAs and ABAs. And actually, Shari went through the painstaking process of meeting with each of the building principals and making sure that all of our students were covered, that we had everything, at least a really good idea of, you know, where the support was needed. And with all of that, and considering kids that moved on and trying to switch, you know, positions around, what we came up with was that we were at a deficit at Park Ave. Elementary by three-point-oh FTE, ABA staff, and a one-point-oh staff person at Bartlett. So that position in particular will cover several different needs within the Bartlett ninth grade. So that is the, that's the initial request for four-point-oh FTE, paraprofessionals, ABAs at those two schools.
And the funding will come from?
I'm sorry, yes. The funding will be coming from the FY24, two-forty grant, which had funds left over because we had a lot of unfilled positions last year with paraprofessionals in particular. That grant very heavily supports paraprofessional funding for the district for IAs and ABAs. So that funding will be put in that grant. We'll be amending that grant to reflect the changes. And then the district will have to consider, you know, at the, at budget development time, what the forecast looks like for the FY26 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Barris.
Through the chair. I just want to clarify, as I'm looking at the memo, it says Bartlett High School, one full-time ABA. And then under Park Ave., it says we are requesting a total of three full-time ABAs as well as one full-time instructional. Did I miss that you said that?
It's, it's a separate item.
Thank you. If I looked at it better, okay. Well, we don't have to talk about that, right? One step ahead.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Through the chair.
Members of the committee?
Until these positions are filled, who is supporting the students that need these assistants?
So we are doing our best to have substitutes when they're available. That's been a challenge. We have, you know, paired students with other students so that we can at least provide, you know, the basic safety and everything that goes along with that. But it has been a challenge, and it's been, you know, something that, you know, we kind of assess day-to-day. The principal makes a plan for the day. We may reallocate because maybe a student is out in a different program, and we'll send that paraprofessional to cover, you know, in a different location. It is, it's, it's patch, like a patchwork quilt. But it, it is something that, you know, with having the positions at least in place, we'll be able to get back to, you know, a strong baseline. We also have, I think I've mentioned this at a previous meeting, but our referrals at the early childhood level have been, you know, very, over the past three years, I would say, you know, definitely students with much higher needs than we have seen in the past. So those students are, you know, going through our preschool program and entering kindergarten. So some of those kids, you know, who did not necessarily have support before, now they're attending a full day, there's different academic demands. So, you know, I think they are presenting with some challenges. As much as we, you know, can get them ready for, you know, the experience of kindergarten, that's oftentimes a tough year for a lot of our students. So we are seeing that at the elementary school. But I think the biggest impact for us at Park Avenue has been the students who have moved into the district with support on their IEPs. And a couple of students who we have, need to determine additional placements for, who are enrolled at the school that we will probably be working with to identify a different placement.
Great discussion. Any further discussion or questions with regard to this request, this request for a total of four additional ABAs? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve four additional ABAs, one at Bartlett High School and three at Park Avenue Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of one additional FTE instructional assistant at Park Avenue Elementary School.
Okay. And similar to what we were just discussing in terms of the ABA support, this is an IA, so someone to support a student who has moved into the district requiring individual support of an IA. So again, that funding will also be coming from the special education IDEA grant. And next year, we will have to consider, you know, we'll obviously during the year, reassess the students' needs at each of the schools to see who has been able to move, you know, forward and away from para-support. And, you know, hopefully, we'll see a lot of gains with our students this year. So that's the purpose for that particular position.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve one additional FTE for an IA at Park Avenue Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barris. And actually, just very quickly, before we move into the warrants, I just want to thank you for your dedication to this district and the many years that you've spent here impacting countless students and staff. I wish you.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a, really a pleasure to be a part of the community for the past twelve years. And, you know, I've, I'll be leaving a lot of great friendships and great colleagues. It's been a great experience for me. And I just want to also say that, I always said this from the very beginning, that I think one of the most important things for not just the special ed director but for a district is to have a really, you know, supportive and, and, you know, committed school committee that works, you know, cooperatively with us. And, you know, I've really felt that, like, right even from the beginning. And I know some of you weren't on the, on the committee then, but it's always been really a pleasure to be a part of these meetings and the partnership that we have. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Barris. Yeah, you will be missed. You don't have to say goodbye to your friendships, just, just, you know, a little change. You won't see them as frequently, but don't be a stranger.